June 10, 2013, meeting of the East Penn School District Board of School Directors for Goodbye Come Quarter. Please rise and join me in speaking.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
The first item I have on the agenda tonight is request to address the board. The first request I have is of Mr. John Donches of McConaughey.
Evening, everyone. This is, basically, addressed to Dr. Seidenberger, but this has to do with the CEPTA invite for a program that we're going to be putting on in August on the 20th. And I have it written here just to... I just found out that you're receptive to working with organizations within our school district on topics relating to education and also in the light that you already presented to the public at previous events at CEPTA. We're hosting, and I wish to thank you for that, we're making a personal invite again on behalf of CEPTA to present at our Tuesday, August 20th meeting. Topic will be Common Core. It will be a forum-style discussion with former teacher, author, and former gubernatorial candidate Mrs. Peg Lukcik talking on the concerns of this federal mandate. So when I heard that you were going to be working with another group on educational topics, I figured I'd better give this a good heads up to you so we can hopefully get you to attend our meeting. And since you're familiar with this and have been implementing it now in the school district, we'd like your representation on how you see it affecting the educational system within the East Penn School District. And I'll be sending you more information as we get closer to the date, but I just wanted to hand that announcement, hopefully you can reserve that date.
Thank you, Mr. Donches. The next request I have to address the board is Ms. Anne Thompson of McConaughey.
Good evening, everyone. I was at the April 8, 2013, school board meeting when a seated director suggested that something illegal occurred in the purchasing of insurance coverage for the East Penn School District. After more discussion, it was apparent the director, questioning the illegality, did not understand how insurance is purchased through independent insurance brokers. The method was patiently and clearly explained by at least three other school directors during the discussion. There was absolutely nothing irregular, unethical, or illegal done. Unfortunately, the lack of understanding spilled over to the primary election, when a family member of that director, specifically and publicly at a polling place, said that school directors were acting illegally. The First Amendment grant of freedom of speech is not unfettered. The U.S. Supreme Court decided decades ago an individual is not free to falsely yell "fire" in a crowded theater. In today's blogosphere environment, some seem to believe that freedom of speech allows them to say whatever they want, including outright lying. Being appointed to finish the term of a resigning school director and then elected for three terms, I have extensive personal knowledge of the financial operations of this school district. Those twelve and a half years include serving as Vice President and President of the Board. Never, in the service as a director, or now as an appointed trustee of this school district, has anyone tried to improperly influence me for my or their financial or other gain. This Board has never done business that way in the eighteen years of association I've had with it. I have full trust and confidence in the past and current members, including four current directors with whom I have served personally for many years. They are not receiving anything under the table for their underpaid, actually, sorry, unpaid volunteer and often unappreciated service to the students and members of this community. Policies and procedures and frequent independent audits are in place to regulate and monitor who gets contracts, who gets hired, and who gets paid. If you don't know it, we are required to utilize the lowest responsible bid contractor. Directors deal with policy and higher administrators to carry out policy. Directors evaluate the superintendent on adhering to policies. East Penn citizens should be grateful for the wise and diligent stewardships of the majority of the school directors since 1993. Look at the terrible plight of other local school districts. Tonight, I emphatically assure you that there is no grand conspiracy, or even little conspiracy, to rip off the taxpayers. Directors are not, quote, "on the take," unquote. Often, the only thing they take or is given is verbal abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Those are the only requests I have to address the board this evening. We'll now move on to approval of minutes. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Now appearing, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is the report of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Dean Seidenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. I just want to say that I think graduation yesterday was an exceptional experience. I certainly want to commend Mr. Perperata, the staff, and the students and their parents who laid out a nice path. I mean, I think we're all still reeling from the unfortunate situation we had two years ago, but I think yesterday typified kind of East Penn School District that I've come to know and love. And I think it was a wonderful experience. I've had the pleasure, as a superintendent of, in another district, two other districts, introducing veterans who served our country who did not get a deployment. And I think for that man, if he received a deployment public and then received a standing ovation, was a touching moment. And I think very important for our graduates to see that. And I was, simple pink, the kids stood up immediately. And I also want to thank Dave Perperata for recognizing our graduates who will be serving in our Armed Forces next year, and then recognizing the veterans and the audience. That was a powerful touch yesterday, and I think set a very appropriate tone for the graduation. I think the students who spoke did a nice job. The piece dedicated to Ben Avril was just absolutely wonderful, and I'd certainly love to hear that again. I think our student positions again exemplified everything that stood about this district. And the sensitivity and the respect to this young man who was really creative, a wonder, and his life was so sadly taken so early, it was a good day. And again, it's always nice to be on the stage when you have a good experience like that. And I think a fitting end for the career of our graduates yesterday. Moving on, in my superintendent's written report, I gave you an update on where we are with enrollment. We're down a little bit when we compare to what we started in late August last year, 8,046. We're now finishing the year at 8,017. We seem to be having small growth at the elementary, middle school levels, and once again this year, for some reason, we seem to be losing high school students along the way. I really don't know why, because we're getting more students back in our cyber high school, but for some reason, maybe people are just moving, I don't know. We'll take a closer look at that next year. Tomorrow's the last official day of school. It's been an interesting year. I think I'll just keep my mouth shut with that, but we got through it, and I think a lot of good things have occurred this year, and I think I've mentioned a lot of those things to you. And as a superintendent, we're just hopeful that our staff, this February, the summer and on, our students are safe and that they come back ready to learn, you know. For those of you who have students, you probably heard my voice this afternoon at about 5:35. As noted at a board meeting about a month ago, we're going to be working with the parent group to bring more routine communications with the community and parents. So we put together, Mr. Mullen cooperated with the planning group, and on our district main website is a survey that everyone's entered. Anyone can certainly participate and complete. I gave people an edgy link call tonight, asking them to complete the survey and see what topics come up next year. Now, again, I want to emphasize, in working with the leadership of that group, this is not going to be a homicide-driven kind of thing. This is going to be driven by the issues. And what we've promised to cooperate is we'll provide expertise in the district. People are not going to come out every month to hear me speak or members of my team. We want to have people that are in the field speak about whatever issues are on the agenda for that evening. I had an opportunity just the other day, go through my packet of things, and one of the things I recall vividly now, I opened up my packet from Fox Chapel High School when I, when you're allowed to be on a high-study council trip in September. I remember the superintendent speaking about such a group, and believe it or not, when I looked at her packet, it was a whole template of topics that they talked about in Fox Chapel. And that superintendent was pretty impressive, and we enjoyed hearing from her. Next thing I want to talk about, local call survey. We, again, were extremely pleased. We had 410 parents respond to the local call survey. So I think we're going to be able to look at the data this summer, and hopefully we'll be able to save some valuable tax dollars while not having to arrange transportation for all the high school students involved. By the way, we're going to go out and do this sometime in July, with Will Lane parents. One thing that we want to make sure, and it took a little bit of time, we want to make sure we got our distances right, but every parent in Will Lane has now been communicated to regarding the distance. And as we talked about several board meetings ago, the 275 starts from the intersection of South Rock and the driveway of the school. And so we double and triple, and sometimes look over and over again at that list before we send it out. But I want the board to, and the public to know that we also included a field process. If someone thinks that the distance is off, Mr. Glancy was good enough to put in and tell parents how we will measure that distance, and so we'll loudly thank the parents who want us in the car. And we promised that we would do that, and so we will. Also, during our transportation study report, we talked about seeing if we could find a way to combine seven Gen and San Ants students, and unfortunately, next year, that's not going to be possible. The start times and end times are too distant for the schools. Seven generations ends at half an hour past San Ants. That means that we'd have San Ants students on the bus about a half an hour to city there. I think we might have some parents that may find fault with that. Plus the fact that seven generations, when you think about it, they just don't serve East Penn students. They've got buses from fifteen or seventeen school districts. So trying to sort kids out at the end of the day is always a challenge for them. Not being disrespectful, but it is always a challenge. They've got many more buses at that school than we certainly have at any more elementary school. So I think what we'll do is work with the principals. Mr. Glancy and I have already met with the bus company. What we might be wanting to do is stretch out those rides a little bit longer next year and see if we can make sure we put more kids on those buses. We had our second meeting with Will Lane parents. I guess it went pretty well. The group met, they came up with some things they're going to work out. Dr. Moore did a lot of planning, and we were able to look at the SLATE plans, there's some suggestions that parents made, we looked them over, we're working with them. I think the group has agreed to come back in September, so that group will continue to monitor the situation somewhat. Thank you, Dr. Moore, Bill, Mr. Glancy, and Mr. Moore, and Paul Slezak for getting all those materials ready. I also got a communication on Friday from Bruce Fosselman. The township is preparing to go out and advertise for crossing guards, and all their bid specs were approved of work, and so we'll see what yields. Just as I've said all along, if for some reason we don't get the crossing guards, or I feel that kids won't be safe, we will do what we did two years ago. And I just want to remind everybody that we did go out and advertise for crossing guards two years ago. So Bruce and I are anxious to see what kind of response we get. I want to be very clear about this. Those crossing guards are employees of the Old McConaughey Township. I was reading the morning call the other day about that non-crossing guard carrying a gun. That was about the Duffner School District's issue, was the person was hired by the Duffner Police Department. So we want to make it very clear that crossing guards will be the employees of Old McConaughey Also, I think two separate board meetings, we had some concerns raised by McConaughey parents about the elementary school. We sent them letters explaining how it is that we're looking at that situation. I can publicly say that we're putting another teacher in McConaughey over that teacher's going to first grade. We will continue to monitor, to look at the fourth and fifth grades next year, but we delve deeply into what our instructional group is going to look like. Once we can accommodate students that have special needs and will be pulled out, in the class of instructional groups, so a little more manageable. And again, some of those instructional assistants will be going to classrooms for things like social edutainment science. But like I do every year, as the summer continues, we will look at enrollments in my field. If another teacher is warranted, I will come back and recommend that, and we'll certainly do what we've done in the past, which is make budgetary adjustments. On a $120 million budget, we can find leeway if we have to. Also, every year, at least the last couple years, past, I always put out a report about what's going on in the state with budget issues. I'm not going to talk about this tonight, but I'm going to give you a copy, much like I did last few years, and all I can tell you is, I feel, my heart goes out for that school districts that are having severe pets this year, and I think if you read it, you know which districts I'm talking about. But it's still shocking and very much of a concern to see that so many districts in Pennsylvania are in really tough fiscal circumstances. So I think at a minimum, we should all feel very good about where we are at this point. I'm going to ask Mr. Glancy to talk briefly about, I'll give you an update on some capital projects that are going to happen this summer, an update based on your willingness to make the transfer of a capital reserve account. Mr. Glancy?
Thank you very much. As we promised earlier in the budget process, we would update the board on capital reserve as well as our list of projects. So first sheet that you have is the update from the capital reserves, which reflects the money that has been transferred in. I think we approved it. So you can see that our total now is $2,982,673. So that's what we currently have in capital reserve. Notice that last year was $1,866,228. So that difference represents the money that we transferred in. Second page are the list of capital projects, and you can see the number one priorities are going to be done this summer. And you can see the totals, and the total for this summer's work, $735,000. But you can also see the needs that we're going to have in the future as we move forward. We have a lot of expensive roof work, unfortunately, coming up in the near future. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Are there any questions for Mr. Glancy?
I have one question, Mr. Glancy. Can you talk about transfers? Are those the ones on the budget tonight that you will be forth, or have they already been done?
They've already been done.
Okay, thank you. So there's no transfers that we're doing tonight that have anything to do with capital assets?
Absolutely. Are there any questions, Mr. Donches?
So, Mr. Glancy, the roof work, I would presume, is a function of the age of the roof?
Correct.
And really, that would be pretty much the reasoning behind the majority of these improvements in that direction.
The majority of the dollars are going to be...
Although I do see some operational savings, like I see...
Right. Of course, any time that we have a chance to save electricity or heat. Of course, another part of the roofing project is we can upgrade our insulation as we do our roofs, and that, again, saves more heat, more energy.
And I believe that we have a plan that checks into account the age of the systems of the building, correct?
That is correct. We have a more detailed plan for the roofs, which extends out twenty years. We have a more detailed plan for our boarders and air conditioning vendors, but to fit that all on a schedule, yes. And as you get farther out, the cost estimates get not as accurate. Very difficult to predict how much the cost of construction material is going to increase year to year.
So in many cases, this is preventative maintenance, too?
Yes.
Anything further, Mr. Barker?
If you look at the priorities that basically, I know you said the priority ones are going to be done this year, is that basically years out, will we tentatively funding on doing two things next year, or that might that be put in all three years, and that's just the next thing that they're considering?
We would recommend that the Item Two pieces be scheduled for a year from now. The total dollar amount is the concern. Right now, we're going to have half a million dollars left.
Hey, Miles? Thank you, Mr. Glancy. Continue on, Dr. Seidenberger.
Thank you. Just want to remind the board that next board meeting, we'll be asking you to go into the budget. I can tell you that's going to be another change. In working with Dr. McCarrick, it's obvious to me that we will be adding another elementary special education feature. And what we'll do, I'll be working with Mrs. Serball, Mr. Glancy, and some of the other administrators, and making about $75,000 worth of changes. In other words, we'll be cutting some other accounts to make sure that we put that $75,000 in our future salary account. So it is what it is, and we'll move forward with the budget. Got an interesting parent communication about a month ago. I think Mr. Ballard got the same word. And for some unknown reason to me, it out of you, just mind your own business, and evidently we have a hot-button topic again in the community, and we're really going to ask the board for some guidance. And as evidently this Wednesday afternoon issue is popping up again. Probably, as you understand, this has been forty years that East Penn has had the 130 release on Wednesday. I don't mind going back and looking at it, but I would like to hear from the board, and if we're going to do that, if we spend some time this summer looking at the issue. We have some artifacts for you. I don't know. We'll make sure, because we haven't given you a copy. We gave you a copy of Greg Nolan, Jan Hoffman, Kinsley, and Wardney after I was hired. I was still working in Jersey, I didn't get it for that. But I think Greg Nolan gave a pretty expansive report. I know the parents were surveyed, teachers were surveyed, and at that point, the board basically held to the schedule of the 130 releases. Now, I don't want to look at it, but certainly of the board's direction from you, we'll take a look at the contract, what's going on, we'll take a look at our Mullen. I would say this as superintendent, if there was a recommendation for a computer teacher, I certainly would not recommend that. At this point, five years, the world has changed. If I'd be looking at anything of here, a teacher that worked on STEAM, math, science, engineering projects in the classroom, I think kids we have today are pretty sharp with computers and technology. That's how much the world's changed in five years. And so I would certainly look at this with a different viewpoint. So I don't mind doing it, not that we have a whole lot of time during the summer, but if I'm going to do it, summer's not a bad time. I would survey the teachers. When they come back in September, I do have answers from teachers, which we haven't given to the board. I don't know how appropriate it is. There's about twenty-five pages of teacher comments that are really insightful, really appreciate the teachers that put the time in 2007 to respond in paragraph form, a lot of good issues. And so there's a lot to think about, and I may do something a little different with surveying, maybe I'll run some focus groups. I haven't done those in a long time. But if you want me to, I'll look at that and come back with a plan on how we're going to study that issue. So I'll let the board give me some feedback on that.
Okay, I guess we need to have some feedback from the board. I'll mention from past history, this issue has come up about every six or seven years. It's sort of like a crop of people gets through elementary school and comes back up again as a new crop of parents get there, and as per usual, the issue is money. So that's an issue that we have to sit there and discuss. Mr. Earnshaw?
Actually, money was part of the issue. If I'm remembering correctly, what we determined was because of contractual length of the teacher workday and the amount of prep time, in order to have the students in school to the same time each day, we would have to shorten the other days of the week was one option. And we couldn't shorten it on the release time because the buses weren't back from the middle school and high school bus run. So we said, okay, we can shorten the day on the front end, start the elementary schools later. It worked out to a 9:15 start, and we got loud and clear feedback from the community that that was unacceptable. I guess a lot of people figured they have to be at work by nine, they don't want their children unattended in the morning, especially particularly young children. I understand that completely. So we said, all right, in order to keep the start time the same and extend the end time on Wednesday to four and a half hours, we would have to have, in essence, two hours, or three, they get at 3:30 now, right? So we'd have to have two hours of additional specialist time to cover that and still give the teachers the same amount of time for preparation in class. And that's where the money came in, and I think the estimate back then was somewhere in the neighborhood of $700,000 to $750,000 to hire all those specialists to provide that kind of relief. So that's, yeah, there are certainly other things we can look at, but as I recall, those were the two options that we had back then, and neither one of them were accepted.
Other comments, try and give Dr. Seidenberger some guidance besides it?
I'm just curious, folks, that history about, anyone know, originally?
I think we have one person.
When we started the early dismissal? I would say thirty-nine years ago, we started, '74, '75, school term, it was part of the contract negotiation. So it was just part of the negotiations at that time.
I believe the issue was teacher preparation time in the schedule, and there wasn't any while they were being paid. So they, I wasn't here for those, but as expressed in several negotiations since then, there's a certain amount of preparation time that the teachers expect to have in their schedule and be paid for, but does not include classroom time. And that preparation time is done partially in large amount in those schools in the afternoons after the 130 dismissal, between 1:30 and 3:30. So that's two hours every week that's part of their preparation time. To get enough prep, the same amount of preparation time for every teacher, but not have everybody in class for those extra two hours, you have to have additional instructional staff to provide some kind of instruction during those two hours while the other teachers are doing their prep time. during those two hours while the other teachers are doing their prep time. So it comes down to, if you want the same amount of prep time, you'd have to reach an agreement with the teachers as to how that would occur. And the simplest way under the current contract is to provide additional staff to provide the instruction during the time when the other teachers are having their prep time.
So I'm understanding that if we do direct Dr. Seidenberger and his administration to look into this, we might be getting the same exact results that I was reading in this.
We might come up with some creative ideas. I don't know.
The only obvious thing, Mrs. Seiden, is that we're on a table. Mr. Lancy wasn't here. He's on transportation now. Mrs. Campbell wasn't here. Dr. Thorma, you were involved in that study? You were.
I was not in this study.
You were in that study. You were here. We have a lot of elementary principals that are different. And so we have, we have some new blood that will look at this issue. And let me just be very clear, and I hope this comes out in a minute. I'm certainly not looking at the fancy kind of controversy here. What I'm suggesting is I give you a 2013 update on what the issues may be. And I don't want to take a position, but I'll give you some factual data. And that's, give you an update, what this looks like in 2013 terms, okay?
Yeah, I'm kind of curious.
Ms. Donches?
I would be in favor of looking at the process and the cost analysis.
Just for the record, I will note that both previous times this has come up while I've been on the board, I've recommended going off to a referendum. To put a permanent- Sorry, Dr. Seiden. Into the tax structure so that we get the community input on doing this. Because it's going to, as I have not found any other way other than additional costs to do this. And if somebody wants to cough up the additional tax revenue, then we will be able to deal with this without any further rancor. And we'll settle the issue, I think, once and for all, or at least for maybe fifteen years instead of seven, as we go forward. Any other further comments? I think, without seeing any big negative objections, I think, Dr. Seidenberger, you should be prepared to go ahead and make some kind of investigation.
We'll come back. And how about September, as I could have for you folks? I just want to have, you know, I don't know what's on our agenda for July and August, but we've started talking. We've started to get together some data internally. And again, I'm not interested in fanning the controversy here. I'm not going to get a recommendation from, I'm just going to give you an update before we go on the issue. Couple of other things. I want to thank Dr. Thorma, Mrs. Campbell. Looks like we're going to be in good shape for our PIL application. As you know, this year, we were all working, instructional rounds was accepted by PDA. PDE has coursework. We all got seventy hours this year, seventy-five hours, seventy hours? Next year, we're running at eighty-four. So for someone like eighty-two, so for someone like me, I'm almost done in two years. And that's, and again, we'll do a cost analysis for you. We think last year with the time and money, we saved you about seventy thousand dollars by doing our own PIL program. So I want to thank the refs who did a terrific job for you. And, you know, it's really, it really is fun. I mean, learning's been fun. All of our administrators talking about education and educational opportunities for our students. We're not talking about, about discipline reports or about state regulations. It's all about learning, and that's been refreshing to say the least. Couple of big things are going on in the state this summer, and I put them in my report. But one of the board meetings in August, Dr. Thorma, Mrs. Campbell, and I, are going to give the board an update on the school performance profile. This is a big change next year coming. I think I gave you some documents, a PowerPoint presentation, and some literature that the three of us received when we went to a workshop a couple of weeks ago. Sent a letter, a letter, we're going out to the staff tomorrow, giving them the same documents. We're going to have to wait and see what our scores look like. But needless to say, there's going to be a lot of work to be done because once we get these schools' scores, then we're going to sit down and develop an improvement plan based on a ton of variables that could be impacting individual schools. And so we'll keep you abreast. But one of the things we want to do is give you a presentation so when the scores come out, at least the board has more than a passing knowledge of what you're reading. Then you can interpret that as your interruption story of people saying, was the eighty-nine mean? Was the ninety-nine mean, hopefully? And so we want to make sure that you understand what that is when people approach your community. The other thing that's going on, something that's big news, is the teacher effectiveness and principal effectiveness process that are known as the Teacher Evaluation System. My understanding is the substantive tool will be released sometime between now and June 30th. Again, Dr. Thorma, Mrs. Campbell, and I are going to a four-hour workshop next Tuesday in Harrisburg again to go over something new, which is the school-level objectives. And again, new terminology. So again, when we talk to you about school performance profiles in August, we're also going to give you an update on the teacher effectiveness program, what that means. We're still of the understanding that we'll be able to submit to the state an alternative process, what that looks like, what that means. I have no idea. I'm almost embarrassed to tell you as superintendent, I still don't know enough to make an intelligent presentation to you at this point. Hopefully, sometime this summer, we'll have more information. So look forward to that in August, and we'll give it over to you. And then the last thing, Mr. Barker and I, evidently, we're looking forward to an interesting night. I went tonight to the Lehigh County Commissioners' meeting. So we'll be there. Anybody who's been on the committee's been asked to attend. So we'll be there. And you now have a response that Lower Conji Township gave to Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. That's all I have, Mr. Ballard.
Any further questions or comments? Mr. Earnshaw?
I'd just like to echo what Dr. Seidenberger said about the graduation ceremony yesterday. I thought it was top-notch. The behavior of the students and the audience was fantastic. Some great touches, like recognizing the veteran who had served in the Vietnam War and was able to get his diploma after so many years. Recognizing our students who are entering the military. I heard that two of our students were leaving that evening to go to Paris Island to report to boot camp for the Marine Corps. So quite a change for them, I'm sure. I'm sure they're questioning their own sanity tonight over their decision. I thought also the composition to honor Ben Alkro was beautifully done. When we moved to the East Penn School District, the Alkros lived two doors down from us. We got to know their family well, and it was quite a shock to lose that young man. And a great tribute to heaven. And my final comment was the duration. From the time the procession started to the time that I exited the arena from the recession was an hour and thirty-five minutes. And I know the recession went on for a few minutes after that. But an hour and thirty-five minutes for maybe five-hundred-and-eighty students being recognized? Fabulous performance. I told people that. They said, oh, we only had three-hundred students, and it went on for four hours. Thank you very much for the amazingly efficient job that still allowed each of our students to be recognized. And thanks to Mr. Caprato and his team for all their hard work. Thank you.
I'd also like to echo that, including Dr., excuse me, Mr. Ramella, who organized the whole thing from the top and was the boss guru in the auditorium, getting everything off on time. It was a well-organized and well-done celebration of our students' graduation. I think everybody could be proud of the entire ceremony. And I will also echo the beauty of that composition that was paid for by donations and commissioned for the Maes High School. And it will go down in, I'm sure, in a repertoire of future band concerts. Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Barker?
I have a question on the attendance report. As far as the enrollment in the high school keeps going down, is there, do we have records that we can compare?
Yes.
Like the families and the families that are still in districts?
One of the things that we're probably going to have to follow is we're going to have to do an accident interview with students as far as we can track them down next year. And see what the reason for. I wish I could tell you, but that's one of the challenges. It's fascinating to me that we seem to, we get to a point in school year and then kids just seem to evaporate. In one regards, you know, high school's a little better for numbers there. We're not as stressed out as we were when I first came in the district. But nonetheless, it's been a steady decline since I've been here.
Would be telling us something important now?
It will, except that I'm concerned, this is the first time since I've been here that we're actually going to have more eighth graders entering the high school than we do twelfth graders leaving. So you might see a little increase in high school student population next year. We'll see what the numbers look like in August.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Seidenberger? None appearing? I'll take, if nobody has an objection, a motion to combine Items Two through Five and believe they can.
Six as well?
Not that request to hold that. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Is there any discussion on Items Two through Five? Ms. Donches?
If we could, the conference reports that I've received in the past have been very helpful and interesting. And I wondered if Dr. Thorma could summarize the future of learning. It sounds familiar.
I'm sure she won. By the way, I will be giving you a summary of my conference attendance, to me, as a summary.
Mr. Earnshaw?
I just wanted to point out that Item Four, the Child Abuse Recognition, Reporting Tracking Software Contract, I believe this is the result of yet another unfunded mandate from Harrisburg, right? That we have to provide this training and track that our employees have completed. Is that correct?
Yes. By the way, Mr. Ballard, yes, it is. We have some minor changes on that contract. There were some typos, not from our end, but from somewhere else's end. On page two of the contract, Items Six and Nine should be reading Section Eight as opposed to Section Seven, okay? We're just minor changes on page two of the contract. Thank you, Mr. Barker. I think you brought that.
I presume those changes are okay with the motion and the second? Any other comments on Items Two through Five? None appearing. Ms. Virgil, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Polakana?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
And Dr. Seidenberger?
Yes, I'd like to reintroduce Mr. Michael Kelly. He's been serving as assistant principal at IRE, doing a fantastic job, and starting July first. He is the new head person at IRE Middle School. Welcome aboard again, Mr. Kelly. And I think we're very excited. I think Michael and Travis Bloom as new assistant principals are going to be a dynamic team at IRE and continue with the one-fire tradition and certainly move that district in a new direction. Also, tonight, perhaps the public doesn't know, but the board has graciously consented to allow me to make some administrative changes to the organization. And so going forward, we still have to name a high school assistant principal. We're in the closing parts of a facet of that operation. But Mrs. Noack, who's been serving as our elementary curriculum coordinator, is now going to shift over into middle school. So we're excited about Susan taking on that challenge. And then tonight, you just hired, I'd like to introduce Michelle James, who's currently a resource room, an ISD teacher at Westcolesville. And she'll now be serving as our new elementary curriculum coordinator. Welcome, Michelle. And Michelle, your first assignment is laying out the Wednesday day half-day program. Welcome to the snake.
We'll now have discussion on Item Six, which is held by President Ms. Donches. Can we have a motion, please?
Second.
All right, discussion. Mrs. Donches?
Yes, I was curious just to know if this covers the full cost of the radios or is it a battery brand?
May I call, Mr. Dr. Maribel, answer a question?
Yes, it covers eighteen radios, three batteries, and the necessary programming completely.
Okay, and are there any strings attached for obligations?
No, there is not. Nothing.
And so it's a one-time purchase of radios?
Yes.
Anything else, Ms. Donches?
I was just going to say that philosophically, I think it covers the brands that have a choice whether to, something of this small amount, so I'm going to stay.
Okay, any other comments? None appearing. Ms. Virgil, will you call the roll?
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Mr. Polakana?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Same.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
And on his-
Okay, we have a letter here in Exhibit Seven, Dr. Seidenberger, by-
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ballard. I just want to, for the public certification, we received a letter from then-Secretary of Education, Ronald J. Camals, basically complimenting the district for having another successful audit. So we want to thank PDE. Working with them is always a pleasure, and I'm glad they'll be met their standards once again. Just for the record, these are fiscal years ending June 30th, 2010 and 2009. But again, the public should be very sure that we are doing things correctly here.
Any comments or questions on that item? None appearing. We'll move on to other educational entities. Carden Lehigh Intermediate Unit in school.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. It's always a pleasure when we have the opportunity to meet our students, just when we saw our students yesterday. And maybe we had the opportunity to meet a bright young man, A.J. Blanchman, who is a student in the Southern Lehigh School District. He is a second grader who has been receiving educational opportunities from the CLIU since the age of six months. He is clearly blind. And his mother pushed for early intervention and is delighted by his success and very complimentary about all he has achieved. It was A.J.'s idea. He had heard on the news that the Phillies were having a teacher recognition program. And so he sat down and wrote a letter to nominate his teacher, Beth Ann Molinari. And of all the letters received, his was chosen, and Beth Ann won. And so they were both invited to come down to the Philly ballpark. And there was a snippet edited on CPS News. And you have to forgive me, I am a sports moron. I wrote down the words, Ryan Howard wore the bracelet that A.J. gave him for good luck. And not only did A.J. promote his teacher, he is in the National Braille Challenge Contest. And he is one of twelve youngsters nationwide for his grade to compete at the U.S. level. So wonderful things are happening at the CLIU every day. And Dr. Seidenberger, I hope you don't mind if I quote from your report because the Carden Lehigh Intermediate Unit is one of these organizations that does many things that fly under the radar, that the general public isn't really aware of it. So quoting Dr. Seidenberger here, he speaks about a service called Overdrive. "I am so pleased that Dr. Odgerstaff works so diligently to form some strong partnerships in highly specialized areas such as legal support for technology issues, assessment programs, benefit coordination, and digital media. I am pleased to relate that our libraries are now operating Overdrive. Through Overdrive, our staff and students have access to electronic material. We can now access eBooks and audiobooks on a 24/7 basis by using Overdrive." And I would like you to note, please, that our IU is the first in the state to offer this service to our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. Are there any questions or comments from Ms. Fuller? None appearing. We'll move on to Lehigh Career and Technical Institute, Ms. Hyde.
I'm going to pass them.
Mr. Ballard, I have that honored this evening. Thank you very much. May 22nd LCTI JOC meeting was another wonderful event. We had many awards being given out, and I'd just like to read into the record some of the EMEA East Penn students who were winners. We have Amanda Benikov, FCC LA, won a bronze medal in baking. Her sister, Caitlin Benikov, Skills USA, earned an Elmer Gates Award. And then Caitlin also, an FCC LA, won a gold medal in culinary arts. Those two sisters gave one of the speeches at the graduation yesterday, and their dream is to own and run a bakery. And LCTI has given them a path to achieve their goals, and they're wonderful young individuals and a pleasure to talk to. Also Rebecca Lenick, DECA, gold medal for written and role play financial services team decision making. Caitlin Ugara, FCC LA, silver in culinary arts. Joshua Petrohoj, DECA, gold medal, written, materials handling and logistics. Petrohoj, Joshua, again, DECA, third, material handling and logistics. Jamie Schwier, DECA, gold, written and role play food marketing. Zachary Ziegler, first in keystone cutting competition. If I'm not mistaken, he also qualified for an Elmer Gates Scholarship. Randy O'Brien, EMEA Rotary Scholarship. Randy O'Brien, again, Skills USA, second in nurse assisting. Ben Scott, Computer Fair, second in logo design. I'm always impressed with the quality of these individuals as human beings and as students, and it's just a pleasure to go to the LCTI meetings and see them being honored in this way. Also, Camp LCTI is up again. This is for grades five through six. The information is on the LCTI website. Lots of great offerings this year, as always. Digital photography, forensic fun, LCTI, kids can sew too. A little something for everybody, and everyone who goes there has a wonderful time. And if I'm not mistaken, Zachary Ziegler, who I just mentioned, went to one of these summer camps, and that led him into his position in, what exactly is he doing?
He's a welder.
He's a welder. And he's gone on with that, and he has a job outside of school as soon as he graduates. And these things just compound upon themselves. And then customized program proposals for specific job training is developed and delivered by LCTI. There are agreements with Motorsports LLC, B. Braun Incorporated, Lehigh Valley International Airport, Reynolds &amp; Reynolds Electronics, once again providing specific training for specific jobs that are available in our area. They also talked a little bit about a female engineers group. Twenty-six young women have signed up for it, and in passing mentioned that 4% of the people in engineering are female, trying to help get some kids, some female students on that path. Mr. Frank Frankenfield of Salisbury was appointed treasurer. And another interesting thing, the IU is now offering a principal certification program at a lesser cost than would do at a normal university site. And that's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Are there any comments or questions from Mr. Rose? Mr. Enshaw?
I just wanted to say a couple more things about Mr. Zach Ziegler. This young man, he wanted to, I don't remember the program he wanted to enter, it was not welding, but the program he wanted to enter in was only available once you were a tenth grader. He started at LCTI as a ninth grader, so he went into welding just figuring it was something that he might be interested in. Well, not only was he interested in it, he has a flair for it. Not only did the young man take that first place award, he was one of our outstanding co-op students of the year, and his employer came to LCTI and said, I need ten welders like him. And the instructor said, unfortunately, I don't have ten welders like him. He is that good, and he will never have a problem finding employment because of the skills that he's developed and because of his dedication to learning his trade. And this is the kind of student that can go on to have great success without going to college. Too many times we think, oh, the only path to success is through college. This young man is going to come out of college, or out of high school, making more money than a lot of high school graduates, probably all high school graduates. He'll be making more than a lot of college graduates, and he'll have all kinds of opportunities to apply his trade in a lot of various settings. He'll always be in demand because he has those great skills. So I certainly hope that more of our students who have that interest and that aptitude take advantage of great programs we have.
Thank you, Mr. Enshaw. Any other comments or questions? None appearing. We'll move on to legislative report. Well, here it is, the 10th of June, and I can't tell you what the state budget is. There have been kind of competing proposals put out. Nobody is sure who's talking to whom or about what. Though there is a fairly good consensus that both pension reform and state liquor sales are off the table. Nobody's willing to touch those, especially in the election year. The situation is still, we don't know what our budget is, and I can't guarantee to you that in two weeks, we will know anymore, because there's absolutely no information out there that makes any sense. There's nobody saying in public what's being talked about. The whole thing is still in no-nance land, as far as anybody else can determine. So right now, all of our figures for the state aid in our budget are guesses, and will continue to be guesses until we get something much more substantial, which, like I said, there's no sign that's going to appear, although it could come out of a smoke-filled room in the middle of the night. You vote it on before we even know about it, but that's the way it is right now. And the legislature continues to pass unfunded mandates, and what really gripes me is they're trying to say that the unfunded mandates don't cost anything. The latest one is requirement for school districts to provide free space for the game tradition to provide training for hunters on school premises during negotiated hours. Now, the last time I checked, most of the time, these classes don't occur during school hours. So now we're having off-hours where we have to provide at least as a minimum janitorial support to maintain the building safety. That costs us something. The legislative analysis of it was that there's no cost to the school districts to provide this. Little thing, but again, it's another nibble, another unfunded mandate that comes through in the legislature, since though it doesn't cost them anything to provide free space, so therefore, we're going to mandate it. So they mandated that schools have to negotiate with the Department of Fish and Game to provide this space for training programs. No money is associated coming from the state to do this. Sure, you got plenty of money down there, just go ahead and do it for free. I've said that this kind of stuff just gripes me to no end, that it continues even at times when school districts like Philadelphia are laying off 4,000, close to staff. Other local districts that we know of are laying off staff. Allentown is laying off staff because school districts don't have enough money, and they'll just say, it doesn't cost them anything, here, go do this. It's the height of hypocrisy, and it's again, hoisting the burden onto local taxpayers that the state refuses to acknowledge that it has the burden to provide for out of the common treasury. So it's a disgusting situation, and I wish it would stop. And that's about all I can report right now. Are there any comments or questions anybody would like to make? None appearing. We'll go on to business operations. Item number one is a bid opening. Item number two is a bid award. So could I have a motion on item number two, please? Some. Is there any discussion on item number two? And then have Ms. Burtz will call to roll.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Enshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Dr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Donches has requested number three be held, so we will have, we need a separate motion on that. Some. Discussion. Mrs. Donches?
I would just like to say that a minute ago, we were collecting the information. I tell you, we have to sort this out by a statement.
Any other comment on number three? Ms. Burtz will be called to roll, please.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Enshaw.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Staying.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Dr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Staying.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Seven eyes tube station.
All right, we have items number four and five. Does anybody have any problem putting those together? Some. Second. All right, so any discussion on items number four and five? None appearing. Ms. Burtz will be called to roll, please.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Dr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Enshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Item number six, Ms. Donches has requested be held. Could we have a motion on item number six, please? Second. Discussion?
Any type of questions? Thank you for putting those together, the people that bid on them and the numbers. We have a $50,544 increase in the rate, and I just wonder, did the insurance coverage was the same as last year?
The workers' compensation coverage is the same as last year, it's a different company.
Right.
So we will be switching companies for the workers' compensation insurance package, we have heard. We had good experience with PMA, we've heard good things about Highmark, and because they're all over the bit, we're recommending we do it. Unfortunately, as I said in the handout to the board, we've had several very costly workers' injuries. Good news is, another year or two, those will be off our experience module, and if we can keep new ones occurring, then hopefully these rates will start to mix.
Is several, like, can be arranged, how many?
About 30,000, 40,000, 50,000, 190,000.
Claims?
No. One claim, one claim.
Oh, you mean the money, the number of claims?
Oh, we have around 100 claims, but some of them are, there's no money. Someone pushed their ankle, they got home, they put ice on it, they're wrong.
And have the members of the advisory board changed at all since last year?
No, they haven't.
And the commissions will remain the same?
That's correct.
And that's worth it. Do they have any other duties to be spanned, other than advising, sending out solicitation for the bid?
Anytime we have a claim, and we have a question, we go straight to them, they give us the information. Sometimes we will be interacting with other insurance companies because of specific problems, and they work with us and the insurance companies, it's all the process.
And do they or anybody else in the district, like, work to reduce our risk in our workers' compensation? Do we have things in place to do that?
PMA work with us. We have a safety, workplace safety committee, and we go through a retraining every year, or recertified every year, every month. We work on the areas where the workers' compensation claims occur, and doing that with a 5% discount, which unfortunately has already included this number and not on common. So that number for Highmark already includes a 5% discount.
And does the council actually meet?
With the insurance.
Yeah, maybe the council. And are those meetings open to the public or to the board? No. Then in our policy, a title on the insurances, it states that, you know, the council shall review the insurances of the district, which I do. So let's put a simple number of locations, which you've shown here, and make recommendations for insurance practices to the board. And this is just like in the form of a motion. I thought it would be interesting to have a presentation from the council to the board, like a formal presentation, as to why, what the market is doing, and explain why they recommend the policy that they recommend.
We could certainly do something like that, but I believe this is fairly respectful. It would be a little important if they wanted to do something like that, we'll have to hold it and find out if they're interested.
Well, since you've given me that occupation on the list, thank you.
Mr. Enshaw? I don't see the need for a presentation. They go out for bid, they solicit from several insurance companies. The insurance companies that are interested in bidding on it submit their bids. We review it to make sure that the coverage that's proposed by the insurance companies matches what we've asked for, and we pick presumably the low bid in every case. Would that be a fair statement? Most responsible leaders. Yeah, so what is there to review? We asked 12 companies for bids, we got four back. These four, they all met the criteria we had, and we picked the lowest one. That's what we have here. So I'm not sure what more to go on, Ms. Donches. So I'm not in favor of dragging our insurance agents in here to simply repeat that simple statement.
No, Ms. Burtz? Other comments?
I think it would be.
Ms. Donches, you want to be ready, Ms. Burtz? You want to go ahead and comment?
Yes, I think it would be of interest. I think the market, what is happening overall, what are, we'd like to see comparatives. It would be interesting, well, they want to present this, but I would be interested to see if we had a broker, or other brokers, of course, that comes into my engagement with the professional services, so maybe I'll just pull this comment. But since it says in our policy for a presentation to the board, I just thought it would be appropriate to have a presentation to the board.
You're presenting to the board, I don't think it says that there's a presentation to, sort of, perform a presentation.
Make up recommendations to the board. I'm just saying that directly to the board, it's on the advisory board.
Other comments? Ms. Burtz will be called to roll, please.
Mr. Enshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Staying.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Dr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
And eyes for attention.
Okay, now we come to, it's actually item number seven. I don't know where, rolled over from six to eight, but so this is item number seven. Is it number seven? Very long.
It really gets some section.
Okay. Okay, number seven is business operations. If we can come through the bid, the bid awards of roof replacement, I guess, that would be a roll call. So we have to have a move.
We did all that.
We did all that.
We did.
Well, I'm on to proposed policies. Yes, directly, oh, that's a good, okay. All right, I just missed where the transition was, because I have a six over here.
Seven point six.
Seven point six. Seven, okay.
Now we're up to eight.
Eight, eight.
Eight.
Eight point eight, okay. We had two draft policies submitted through a individual request. Those are the policies provided by Ms. Donches. Uh, we had two, uh, draft policies submitted, uh, through a individual request, those are the policies provided by Ms. Donches. So, I presume, Ms. Donches, you want to inform the board why you wish to request the board to consider this policy?
Yes, and then could you remind me what the process is, is this considered first reading, or this is?
No, it's not considered any reading.
Administration?
It's not considered any reading, because we have not agreed by the board to take up that policy.
Okay, that's, that's it, so, in other words, it's not. Um, well, this is the first draft of a revised policy, and I do welcome other comments. As you know, within the past year, many people have come to the podium, the residents who have addressed us on various issues, and during appeals, a few citizens have mentioned that they would like the opportunity to have dialogue with the board, not just to have the three minutes to speak and that to receive no response. And two people specifically mentioned their positive experiences with Lower McCunty Township meeting, and they felt that they could ask questions, receive responses, and, um, really those meetings satisfied that they had been heard. And it's these taxpayers, and behind that, I propose this, uh, update to the public participation in boards of this policy. And having attended the Lower McCunty Township meetings and Lehigh County Commissioner meetings, which have the same format on numerous occasions, I can see firsthand how efficient this manner of conducting business is. So, my draft is based, um, I've taken our current policy, and, um, the additions are underlined and the deletions are struck out, as you can see. And I listed other public school policies, which included language that seemed to match what I had in mind. And really, the major difference with this one is when citizens address the board. So, as I'm proposing it, um, speakers who want to address the board about items not on the agenda would make their appeals at the beginning of the meeting, at the same point where we currently have it, when we ask us citizens to address the board. And, um, then, the changes would be when each agenda item is addressed by the board, the board would do deliberation, have discussion, and then, before we vote, the president or presiding officer would ask if there is any citizen input, and at that time, citizens would sign into the podium, introduce themselves, and make their remarks, or have a dialogue with the board if they have questions pertaining to the current agenda item. And then, once all citizens have spoken on that agenda item, there may be that perhaps would, um, prompt more deliberation or questioning, or a conversation among the board, and then the vote would be taken. And then, there would be one last and final opportunity for citizens to speak, which would be at the end of the meeting, and there again, the president would ask for final citizen input before or during the meeting. So, basically, um, that is my proposal.
We have two proposals here, do you want to cover them both?
All right, okay.
Mr. Ballard, I, I'm going to cover it separately.
All right, uh, anybody else? Separately, all right, we'll take them one at a time, as to whether the board wishes to discuss them, or wishes to, uh, entertain having the administration work on them. We haven't had a motion yet, even consider them. So, I guess that's the first item we must think about. I, I didn't hear a motion in there, but perhaps you wish to make a motion, you want to make a motion to have the, uh, East Penn School Board consider revising the policy, starting the draft?
Yes, I will submerge that.
Second. Okay, now we can have discussion on that particular item. Ms. Donches has had a moment, uh, who else wishes to speak? Ms. Hyde?
I just have a few things, and I'm probably going to have some other things, but do we have email addresses on our requests?
What was that?
Do we have email addresses for our requests to speak to the board?
We haven't requested them yet.
Okay, I, I would like to see that, I think it's, uh, especially, um, a saving aspect when we get back to individuals. I, I'm still on the fence about everything that, um, Ms. Donches has in here, I, I kind of reached out to Upper Milford, and I'd like to get some more information on my own, and I would like to attend the Lower McCunty one, to see how that works. I'm all for public input, and I would even be willing to come in, uh, a half an hour early if individuals want to have more of a, a, a discussion, and that we could always break into, um, our clear session. The thing that makes me nervous is that every agenda item, um, I've just never ran a meeting like that before, and like, I'm not open, it's not that I'm not open to new experiences, but, I don't know, it's like momentum, and then, and, and I, I think my biggest concern too is, when is there a cutoff? And I think the one thing that I saw in here, that it says three minutes duration, not including responses or dialogue, and a participant may not speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. Well, that same individual is going to seem to say the same thing over and over, um, to kind of get their point across. This is where I, I, I'm kind of having issues with it, I think we definitely, as a group, have to talk about this a little bit more. That's it for now, I'm kind of going to gauge my other board members, what they're looking at.
Okay, other comments, Mr. Stoltz?
I may not agree with each and every item on here, but I'm open that the board is considering it, since it's policy change, I understand there's first and second readings, so we can also then pretend that the change has, as we go, having attended the Mayasboro Council meetings, Lower, uh, Lower McCunty Township Commissioner meetings, and Lehigh County Commissioner meetings, I prefer some, some change to what we have now, we, we should, I think, uh, have a format that's a little more open to citizen input. So, I'm, I'm all in favor of taking this up and looking at changing the way we do meetings based on how other local municipalities hold their meetings, and, uh, how, what will we arrive at, I, I'm not quite certain where I'd like us to end up, I, I think looking at a change.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, first, if, uh, if we acted on every suggestion that every person has brought before us, just because a couple of people did, this district's budget would be tens of billions of dollars higher, because I don't know how many people would come and said, "Class sizes are too large, you need to hire more teachers." "Bus routes, you need to provide more busting, you need to provide more age, you need to provide this." If, if we said, "Well, a couple of parents asked for it, therefore we should do it," so I'm a little leery just to say, because a couple of people who came to the, to the board suggested that, that we should make a change, uh, it's certainly worth a discussion. My, my bigger concern, besides the structure of this, is on the second page, Ms. Donches did not, uh, address that in her comments. Uh, under rules of conduct, uh, to me, this seems like, and I'm not a lawyer, but it sounds a whole lot like prior restraint of a person's First Amendment rights, that we, I, if I, if I remember from my reading of the Sunshine Act, we cannot limit the content of their statements. We cannot say, "You can talk about anything you want, as long as it's not these things." So, saying that, "No person shall orally initiate charge or complaints against individual employees in the district, remarks by any person addressing the board which reflect adversely upon the racial, religious, economic, or political views, character or motives of any person on the staff, the board, or at the meeting are out of order." Uh, unfortunately, as an elected official, my economic and political views inform the decisions that I make as a member of this school board. If those are out of bounds for comments from, from the audience, uh, that, that limits the discussion quite a bit, because we've got people on the board with different philosophies, so we can never have anyone come up and say, "I'm all for limited government." If there's any one member of the board who's not in favor of limited government, they couldn't make that remark. And I think that's, uh, in addition to being a, a potential prior restraint of someone's First Amendment rights, not to mention their, uh, rights to petition the government for redress, uh, so I think we, we would be completely illegal there. But, second of all, we as, as public officials have to be willing to accept criticism that the public brings to us. If I had a thin skin and couldn't take the criticism, boy, I'd go home, uh, every night, just crying in, in my, uh, in my hot cocoa. I, I've been called a whole number of things by members of the public, and I'm sure in private, they call me even worse. Uh, the other concern I have is in the paragraph, "Following the rules of conduct," where the presiding officer may interrupt or terminate someone's statement if, uh, it's irrelevant. So, the presiding officer here has unilateral authority to determine what is or is not relevant, and, uh, that really concerns me. You, you almost are setting up a dictator in the front chair that says, "I determine who gets to speak, and on what topic, when they have to stop." I think that entire section on rules of conduct, uh, definitely puts us away from being open and receptive to public, to being dictatorial, and, and I think that's, uh, not where we want to be.
Okay? Ms. Fuller?
Uh, well, I, I, I see, um, well, in reading this, I, I really wondered how many weeks we would develop to one meeting, um, with the kind of rules that we had here, um, suggested. My husband had been assertive on the first homehold board of, of Lehigh County Commissioners, uh, which followed the, uh, um, projections made by Ms. Donches. There were days, there were meeting nights, if he was going at seven thirty, I would not see him until four AM, because there were members of the public and members of the board who, um, putting it bluntly, liked to hear himself talk. And there was one board member who would speak as a board member, and then would go speak as a member of the public. And, uh, I remember firsthand, um, we had a muck that really went on with these kind of rules. Although we don't have a dialogue here, we hear what is said, we have integrated the suggestions that we made into, uh, programs that we've implemented. Uh, the Willow Lane Bussing is just the latest of that. And to the concern that if somebody comes up and asks a question and we don't answer it, um, often, in a, a district with more than eighty thousand students and hundreds of employees, the answer that you're seeking is not at the ready, but it can be obtained, and the answer is given. So, therefore, I really don't see a problem with the current way that we, our, our business moves.
Okay, someone hasn't spoken yet, Dr. Barker?
Um, I've mentioned it before, and, and I don't, I would be open to making it more formal, I think, often directors stay after a meeting, uh, and are available for public to, to have an actual dialogue with them, and it doesn't, other people, uh, longer, and I would propose that as one remedy to this. Um, I also had some of the concerns that Mr. Earnshaw, uh, expressed with the rules of conduct as opposed here. Um, and finally, um, I'm open to changing things, um, but I would like, um, perhaps a way to try some things out before we change the policy, and find out when we change the policy that, uh, that did work out very well. And, uh, reading our current policy, I think most of what Ms. Donches, uh, is suggesting would not require a change in policy. Uh, there is a statement, "If no advance request is made, a person wishing to be heard by the board shall first be recognized by the president," uh, and goes on from there. So, I think if we agree to try some, um, some ways of, of perhaps addressing some of the concerns that would be raised, I would prefer doing that, uh, rather than changing the policy, and then, I would be, be, uh, in favor of experimenting with things, uh, perhaps starting with maybe a more formal, um, time to discuss things with the public after the meeting, uh, rather than changing the policy right away. If we come up with things that we think work and improve the communication with the public, uh, that might be a time to, to start a policy change.
Okay, anyone who's not otherwise spoken for, on the first round? Dr. Barker?
Mr. Paul Cattley, please. I, I, listening to Willow Lane, and having been to many Lower McCunty meetings, and Lehigh County meetings, especially budget meetings, which can be, um, very, they've had a lot of issues, and require a lot of discussion. In the Lehigh County and Lower McCunty, we're very efficient, we got through very well, very, very short, shorter time than I ever expected in such meetings. And I think where we miss to taxpayers, we don't allow the same kind of, uh, at least the same kind of rules in our meetings as the other parties do. I don't see any reason why we can't at least follow their, their approach, because it works very well, in my opinion. I see nothing wrong with it, and it gives the, uh, we have a lot of intelligent people out there, and sometimes there's some great ideas that come out of there that we may entertain, we're not necessarily, that, and, and we think, of course not, just because two people suggest something, they're going to handle it. But, it are, we should draw on the task of two, the same clock, and I think it's very important as a community that we do that. And actually, the residents all work in schools, and they're paying for it, so they should have more of the say, that we allow them to have. You know, maybe seven rules have to be, we're sorry, a little bit, but I think we should go along and make changes.
Okay, anyone else, besides my, uh, Dr. Sizer, or myself?
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, I just want to pass out a little primer for board members, that's not an uptick, and so, anyone's attention, uh, intelligence, but there's a little reminder with policy and how we develop policy, this comes from the National School Voice Association. Uh, one of the things I would ask Ms. Donches is, uh, maybe you can email me tomorrow what, what school districts you saw on language, because, uh, over the last couple of days, I looked at sixty school districts myself, I'm looking for a matching ball of language, and I only come across, uh, maybe three that would fit the kind of thing you're talking about, that maybe serve in the wrong, uh, the wrong districts, but I try to go balanced statewide. I, I think one of the things that we need to be crystal clear on is First Amendment rights, and I think, uh, when you look at sample policies, um, that's the first place to start, so, I think anything the board should do, we should, we should automatically look at, sample policies from our organization or from other school districts, so if you can give me the names of the school districts I want to contact and look at. If one's North Dalgane, I have North Dalgane's already. Does that look that, well, there we go, see, we both shared something tonight. Uh, North Dalgane is a wonderful school district near Pittsburgh, um, and they have, I think, kind of dialogue that you suggested. Uh, they have come in, uh, before every agenda, and there's several others that have language that varies, and again, um, that's why I'm really strongly recommending that maybe we get a bundle of policies and papers, okay? I would say this, in, in sort of agreement with Ms. Hyde and, and Dr. Barker, one of the things I think I've seen overwhelmingly in the sixty districts is there seems to be a, a, uh, an inclination towards, uh, two sessions that, um, citizens can comment at board meeting. And overwhelming just number of districts have, uh, before the, the business meeting starts, uh, comment on agenda items, and then, at the end of the meeting, uh, people can comment on topics of interest to them. Now, based on our, our most recent, um, controversy here, I think some of the Willow Lane parents might have been angered that we would have waited until the end of the meeting to have a comment, because certainly, only the last recommendation I had was, was something regarding an agenda. But yet, that is the one constant, the one, uh, consistent thing I've seen in policies that I've looked at. So, again, um, uh, much like the little primer I've, I've given you, if there's a school district that's doing this, I, I think, it behooves us to contact that district and get some, uh, some face-to-face or person-to-person contact, how well that, that, uh, policy's doing. And I would certainly suggest that for the second policy you're proposing, that we certainly do our homework, do our research, and see what's out there before we make any commitments on the floor, and I think, at a minimum, we really need to do that. Yeah, I would make my strongest recommendation. I mean, I, embarrassing, so I teach this class at Lehigh, and this is something I suggest all residents felt like it's a killing. You sat through that, you did okay, but this is something that's fundamental in policy development, it's going to, a summer checklist like this, it's, it's just good business.
Okay, anybody else, besides me who hasn't spoken yet? We'll do a second round here in a minute.
Uh, I'd like to talk about my concerns with, uh, this particular proposal. Being a professional engineer, I'm always concerned with process, and, um, doing things this way is, is outside of process, because it's trying to force the, uh, adoption of certain things in certain ways without going through the process. And, uh, part of the process And part of the process is that we subscribe to a service from PSBA, Policy Service, where we get policies from them. And they also are review policies that we might be thinking about generating and give us practical and legal considerations of those policies. And generally, policies are put through an administrative process first in order to get the administrations' take on the policies before they come to the board as something that we comment on. And without going through the process and suggesting things, that is one thing, but it's not going through the process, it's not taking advantage of all the resources that we have to do these things. So this is following a different approach that I've seen over the past 18 years on board. So I'm concerned with that. And then I'm concerned with some of the approaches because there has been a global group, particularly during elections, I find, that wants to develop what they call dialogue at the school board meetings, but in reality, what I found it to be more like is argument. They won't be able to argue with us about what we're doing. And in many cases, talking about the length of speech, it's because they want to make a lengthy speech. And it's not necessarily what the law envisioned or our constitution envisioned, the right to petition for the redress of grievances, used to be exactly that. You wrote a petition, a written thing, that the boards would have some facts and some other considerations and wouldn't have to be sitting there taking notes over long speeches trying to figure out what the salient points were. They have something in front of them. So I've gone through the process for 18 years, and I've found that in general, my observation is if somebody can't tell you what their grievance is in three minutes, they probably couldn't tell you in 30. We've had plenty of people come to the board and made their point in far less than three minutes. And I don't think it's appropriate to engage in arguments on the floor about what you're doing, particularly as the fact that somebody has the ability to bring up something that you and your staff and the members of the board are totally unprepared for. And so you're supposed to engage in dialogue in something that you're totally unprepared for? I know that there are people who like to catch people unaware, it's called ambush politics. And it is not good government. It's merely somebody playing politics as a game where you score points and not dealing with the fact that in this case, this is real life, real people, real jobs, real money, and real outcomes that have to be decided by a legislative body. I will point out that our legislative body is like the legislature. And, you know, that's one body that has no input. They don't have anybody show up on the floor, and if somebody started from the gallery and started talking, they'd throw them out. So we're at a lower level, we have a law that says we have, because you have to have time for the public to comment on issues, and we allow that. We have had plenty of people comment and plenty of issues come up over the years, and they've all been dealt with one way or the other. Part of the problem is that some of the people who advocate for these things, they don't understand that sometimes, as a pastor once told me, the answers to even prayers are no. So that's one of the things that comes up. As Dr. Sidenberger, I don't think the parents of Willow Lane would have been happy waiting for two hours to make their comments about the meeting. In fact, some of them left right immediately after making the comments, which a lot of people do, not willing to stick around and hear all the balderdash that we have to go through discussing all of these things. And I don't think that, that would be appropriate, although if there was some large issue where there was a large number of people speaking on an item that wasn't on the agenda and it was going to take a couple of hours to go through, I would think we might, we're perfectly within the law to move that to the end of the meeting. And I'm also troubled by the fact that a couple of these things being discussed tonight are actually, in my opinion, being brought up as what they call nowadays wedge issues. That is something for somebody to campaign on. I want to increase the time, or I want to have people come in and speak at the meetings and have a dialogue, and this is what the school board should do, and all of that. If it weren't for the election season, being here, maybe I could countenance that, being honest, attempt to come forth with a new issue, but I'm concerned about that. And I also think that I'm more than concerned about the issues that Mr. Earnshaw brought up about restricting not only comments of the public, but apparently comments of the board in response to the public if you were going to have an argument. And believe me, I can have an argument with the best of them, and you haven't seen me in full argument mode yet, believe it or not. And trying to presuppose that we can't even comment on the politics of the issue, just like now, I can't comment on the issues that it's part of an election scheme and things like that. I'm going to quote somebody, I think I heard Mr. Stoltz use this one time, although I don't think he likes to admit it came from a Democrat. And the quote is, "If you can't stand the heat, get the hell out of the kitchen." So if you don't expect your things to be criticized, don't bring them up. Because I, for one, am going to take on some of these issues, especially more in the future, and comment from my position, my own personal beliefs, on what's going on here. And we're all public officials, if you bring up something that I think is stupid, I'm going to comment on it. And whether you like it or not, it is not bullying. It is responding in a public forum, in public issues brought forth by a public official. And if you think you're not going to get criticized, get the hell out of the kitchen. So those are my comments. We'll move to round two. Who wants to start again? Mr. Stoltz?
Speaking about procedure, I believe what we're debating in the first place is whether or not to consider a policy change rather than the exact merits of the policy changes that Ms. Donches proposed. As a matter of fact, I happen to agree with the concern Earnshaw's problems with some of the second papers suggested she make. But that doesn't mean that I'm going to scrap the idea of looking at this policy and making some changes as a whole. I've advocated this in non-election years too, but heretofore, there hasn't been enough support to get a vote on it. So I'm glad to see that word is discussing it. And it's, it's really a matter of respect to the public. People come to these meetings, and I do hear this all the time, and they speak, we stare at them like a bunch of statues, and then they go home, and maybe they get from the administration, maybe they don't. They've had, more often than not, their taxes increased, they pay more in the district, they deserve to be heard, and they deserve a response. And looking at this policy in and of itself shows that we respect their concerns. We don't have to go with the exact changes that are proposed here, but I think several of you have indicated that you're interested in seeing if maybe we should change it, or maybe we can try some changes, something like that. I know that right now, most of our policies are set in place according to PSBA model policies, I understand. I've never been quiet about my disdain for PSBA. I happen to share my friend Simon Campbell's view that PSBA should stand for pretty silly, blindingly awful. I'm not concerned about what PSBA recommends, I'm concerned what's best for the citizens of the East End School District and listening to their concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Stoltz? Anybody on round two? Ms. Donches?
I will just, I thank everybody's input, I really do. I knew this wasn't perfect coming into it, and I'm, well, I'm sure the solicitor will look at it and address Mr. Earnshaw's questions as far as the legality of it and so forth. As far as the word irrelevant, I know that often, and maybe it wouldn't happen as much here, but in the county, someone will come with a city issue. So if somebody came here to talk about the way you pay taxes, and, you know, we might respond, "Well, that's because of your county." So in that respect, there could be something irrelevant brought before the board. Often at the commissioner meetings, there will be something that the commissioners really aren't prepared to, they don't have any information on hand, and that's, and that's fine. They simply, you know, they are signed in, they make sure the president knows for sure, and the board secretary to make sure to get back to that person. So everybody is very respectful of knowing that not everything is right at the fingertips. As far as on the process and how to come through it, I think for the steps, we don't have a policy committee here, we don't have committees, subcommittees at all, so this is a forum in which we need to bring up links for discussion. So there's no, it seems to me, the way to bring it about. As far as Dr. Bakker's idea about the board directors waiting around until after the meeting, and that those are one-on-one conversations, they're small group conversations, and not the whole public then who's come to talk about that issue is privy to those comments. And so it should be all part of the meeting and all part of the discussion. I'm not really in favor of that. I'm certainly in favor of saying after talking anyway, but not to defer to that behavior. With that, I would just, I would just ask your support, as Mr. Stoltz repeated, this is strictly to look at the policy, review it, certainly to make changes. I'm sure it can be better than it is now, and I thank you for your consideration.
I will point out that there has been a policy committee, we just haven't had any policies reviewed for the past couple of years. So we can resurrect that if that's the rule of the board. Have either a committee of the whole or a designated subset of people. Remember, it's another meeting. So, do you want any further comments? Mr. Earnshaw?
To follow up to that, Mr. Val, not only is it another meeting, it's another meeting that needs to be advertised, which has a cost to the district, it has to have minutes that have to be kept and approved. So it's, it's not a free option, it's something that we pay for. Just a couple of other comments. First of all, I'm very drastically opposed to having two public comment sections, one at the beginning of the meeting for the agenda and one afterwards for everything else. That has been used in the past on this board to disenfranchise the public. There were board meetings that would go on, if I'm remembering from my descriptions from Mrs. Thompson, that would go till 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the morning till virtually all the members of the public have left. And then they would say, "Okay, anyone who's from the public, now it's your turn to come forward." That's a really easy way to silence the public by dragging out board meetings for hours and hours to discourage them. So I personally prefer having the ability of the public to address the board on any issue they have at the beginning of that meeting. I think that is a much better way to promote input from the public and the transparency that sometimes gets bad about. I'm always in favor in reviewing policies. I'm not in favor of using, I think the motion says using this draft policy as the starting point. I think it's too deeply flawed to be a starting point, that we should use the current model policies from PSBA if we review it at all. And the reason for that is those policies have been reviewed by legal counsel. It's not just somebody sitting down and throwing something together and saying, "Yeah, this ought to work." So in spite of Mr. Stoltz's rather rude comments about the Pennsylvania School Board situation, for which I believe he has never attended a function that they put on, I don't believe he's ever attended a training session. So I'm not sure how that opinion comes up, but be that as it may, I think their policies form usually a very good basis from which to start. So if the board is interested in pursuing this, then I would much prefer to start from that policy, not from this draft that Ms. Donches has put forward.
Anyone else? You want to superside Ms. Donches, it would be third round? Mr. Paul Canna?
As I said before, I think there's a change, I don't think everything is in that. Ms. Donches indicated it should be in it, but I do believe that in any of the meetings, just like the Lower McCunhee and the Missures, there should be a three-minute per person comment on non-agenda items at the beginning of the meeting, and I would prefer that. And as each agenda item comes up, and after the board members have done with their conversation and are ready to vote, we should have the residents make comments, and that should be limited to three minutes for residents. And like none, but doing that, I know I would have better comments sometimes after the agenda items discussed than at the beginning of them, because now I have more information than I didn't have before. And as a resident, I would really appreciate that, and I think other residents too, who also voice that need moved to. And I think we owe that to the residents. At the very minimum, I'd say we should have minimum changes to that policy that allows such a poor takeaway.
Okay, anyone else? Dr. Bakker?
I disagree with Mr. Stoltz's comments that if we don't adopt something like this, we're not listening to the public. I agree that we can be listening to the public, we have several avenues to do that. Again, I'd like to say I'm in favor of looking at the policy. I threw out an idea of evaluating changes before we start developing a new policy. But if people are not agreeable to do that, then I think I'm leaning toward where Mr. Earnshaw had headed it. We, as we did with the investment policies, we instructed the administration to come up with a policy as a basis to review how we conduct our meetings. But my first choice would be have some idea of where we're headed, where we start in that direction.
Ms. Brusley, read the current motion. Speaking of going where we're headed.
That these then board of school directors consider revised policy as presented.
Ms. Donches. Okay? Any further comments? That's what we're going to look. Ms. Donches?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on your comment regarding the wedge issue. Previously in your legislative report, you mentioned that the pension reform and the liquor sales are off the table because it's an election year. Nothing gets done ever because there's always something to keep people from bringing it up. And it's read in where someone sincerely tries to do something at the request or at the proposal for a taxpayer sincerely to bring something up to make changes that has been requested and to make things better. I totally agree with Mr. Paul Canna, having been to many of these meetings, the commissioner meeting and the Lower McCunhee township, that you do have more information after the speaking of the, you hear more conversation, and then you have better questions because of that. So, and criticized, I'm used to being criticized, so that's not anything new to make. And I just, I appreciate everybody's input, and as I said, I feel that this could be a better policy, we could have better interaction with the public, they deserve it, and thank you again for your consideration.
Okay, now, I'm going to try to restate what I think the policy will do, and if somebody disagrees with that, let's have it out right now. I think the first direct.
Motion.
The motion. Yes, that's what I'm saying. The motion will be for the administration to consider the policy, come forth with a recommendation of a policy to the board for first and second reading.
I don't believe that's close to...
Well, who's going to rewrite the policy?
I think that's what I was saying I would agree to, and I think Mr. Earnshaw said he would agree to, but that's not the motion that's on the table. As far as Mr. Bertle's made.
Well, the question is, if that's not the motion, does anybody want to amend the motion? Because if somebody has to rewrite the policy, and it's not the administration plus, and it's a committee, and we have to get into a committee meeting, because the policy does not get rewritten by dis submission of a draft.
But Mr. Ballard, the motion read by Ms. Bertle was to approve this particular policy. So to consider revision of this particular policy.
We can't, we have a policy on policy, and it has included the first and second readings.
We asked for the solicitor.
Well, I, I think we have the choice to vote his up or down.
Yes, that's true.
We have the choice to vote his up or down.
The question is, what are we voting on? Are we voting on the process, or are we voting on the content of the motion?
Ms. Bertle, will you read back again what the motion was?
That these pen board of school directors consider the revised policy as presented.
As presented.
Okay, so it's policy as presented.
I was late.
Mr. Stoltz?
I, I recall in the past that the board, I've submitted suggested policy changes before, and in point in fact, we did end up adopting some of those changes, referable to archiving cassettes, since the board itself that made the revisions of first and second reading. But we did not have a committee that, we did not have separate committee to consider any of those lines.
We've done it both ways.
That's what I would suggest that we do going forward, although this is Ms. Donches's baby, so to speak.
Well...
We recently revised the investments, do you remember? And that...
And at first and second readings.
Right, but the administration took that and reviewed it and brought back their recommendation without going to a policy committee. So I guess I will amend my motion that the public participation in board meeting policy be considered for revision.
By the administration?
By the administration.
With a recommendation to be made to the board. I'm just trying to get to that point here.
I think that's what we're going, and the recommendation to come before the board.
Is that accepted as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay? So now I think we have something that we can see clear. Does everybody understand? Ms. Bertle, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
No.
Mr. Polacano?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
No.
Seven orange two reds.
Could you please essentially make the same motion on the next one?
I was thinking the same thing, Mr. Ballard.
Please. You want to make a motion, so you can do the second.
Make a motion.
That the engagement of professional services policy be considered, well, we don't have this, that a policy...
Policy be created.
That a policy for the engagement of professional services be entertained for inclusion into the block of board policy, that be added to.
We'll now have discussion on the second policy.
I guess I'd like to reiterate that we are now recommending, we're not recommending that this policy be reviewed. So you may remember that on the April 8th meeting, I made a motion that professional services be bowed, and I thank everybody for your suggestions and your concerns, and I was hoping that this policy, this draft, answers some of those questions. I do feel strongly that we do need a policy that establishes a timely review of the engagement of professional services. And here again, I, and Dr. Seidberg sent these to you, the sites that I went to that had the verbiage that I felt, without reinventing the real closely matched my intentions. And this is to begin discussion, however, we don't really need to discuss it if we just tell the, or ask the administration to review this and consider, make recommendations to us for this engagement of professional services. There are some parts of it, which I did include, that there were questions about which services would be covered and how often they would be reviewed, the fact of what would be included, would they advance notice to the board. I've noticed that the professional, approach of professional services have really increased. And I would like again to say, as I said last time, that this is not saying that we're not pleased with the service, that we're not happy with the vendors, it is just the prudent and fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we're reviewing on a regular basis. And I appreciate your consideration.
Mr. Earnshaw? Well, obviously, this is not, we're not considering the language that was presented here. I found the language to be so deeply flawed, is to be practically unusable. One of the challenges I think we have with this is that when we look at so-called professional services, we engage them on a number of different bases. So for example, with our audits, we engage a firm to do an audit for a single year. We don't engage a firm to do audits for a period of years. And I believe every year that I've been on the board, we have received a, what's the term? It's a engagement letter, a letter of engagement from an audit firm, and then we have acted on that. So, so a lot of these things that were written here seem to be fundamentally misunderstanding that the school board approves every contract that is entered into by the school district, whether it's a contract for fifty dollars, or fifty thousand dollars, or five million dollars. We approve every single contract. The administration does not have the ability to unilaterally sign a contract on behalf of the district without our approval. Is that correct? So, now, we, we have the controls right now. A lot of these other things, I was looking at them and saying, "I don't get it." First of all, for example, architects, the district does not have an architect of record. In my term on the board, when we've had a project, we've engaged an architectural firm to do the work. And the architectural firm has been engaged for a project, not for a period of time, but for a project. And we've had a number of projects that have lasted more than three years, from the start of engaging an architect to when the architect finally signs off on all the closing documents and the project is closed out. So to put a time limit on that, well, if you were to throw an architect off the project because an arbitrary term had passed, term of years had passed, you're still on hook to pay that architect the full fee for the project, even if you decide to bring in a new firm. And then you'll pay the new firm fees for, for doing those services. So I don't understand why, now, if we were to engage an architect of record for the district, then I could see having some rational basis for a term of engagement, but since we only do it on a project-by-project basis, it's nonsensical. It says here, "Construction Services." I'm assuming that means construction management services, because construction services are always bid out, and they go to the lowest responsible bidder, and that's part of state law. But for construction management services, we've done the exact same thing. We've engaged them on a project-by-project basis. For, I don't know what space usage services are. For insurance advisory, we do not engage professionals, we do not hire them. We have brokers with whom we work, we do not pay them, ever. Not a cent from the district goes to them. They are paid commissions from the insurance companies, just like all other insurance brokers everywhere, at least that I'm aware of, in the entire fifty states of the U.S., legal services. We have a number of ongoing legal matters that come, come and go on a regular basis. If we were to change our solicitor on a certain basis, you know, and say, "Okay, it's time for review," and we decide to change our solicitor, what happens with lawsuits that are in progress, depositions that might be scheduled, depositions that have already been held, but matters that have not gone to trial? That seems to be like the height of responsibility that you would come in and say, "Okay, we're going to have a new solicitor now." Now, I could see, you could say, "We're going to have two solicitors, and we'll keep one firm to finish out all the open legal issues, and another firm for all new ones." I can't see that that would promote efficiency or effectiveness in the district. Medical professionals, we, we have nurses who are employees of the school district. We have a chief school physician who is appointed annually, not every two years, and three years, or any other term, it's an annual appointment. So I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, "I don't get the point of the policy for me to have one. We have adequate controls in place with board review. The board can choose to change its legal professionals, its audit professionals, its architects at any point. I'm just not sure I see that there's some burning reason that we would have to, to review these on a regular basis." And if we look at as a model for the language, the amount of overhead the district would incur in creating requests for proposals, advertising them, because those have to be advertised, there's an expense to that, putting them out, spending staff time to evaluate them, potentially having the board interview those professionals, that just seems like an incredible amount of overhead, and I don't see any compelling reason to stay there. Now, if, in the public comment section, yes, I do listen to the public comment, there was apparently some claims that school board members were taking kickbacks or bribes from professional organizations to, for the district to hire them. That's slander, first of all, but since I'm a public official, I would have difficulty proving in court any kind of ongoing damages from such a thing. I certainly won't, won't pursue that. But it is a devolved-based lie. In eleven and a half years on the school board, no one has ever approached me with any even suggestion of impropriety in those regards. And if they would, I would immediately report them to our solicitor, and if it was our solicitor that did it, I would report it to the administration, so they could report it to the bar association for legal action to be taken in revoking his credentials. So I'm just not seeing the point of this. If you can, if there is a point, please do it. Thanks. I've gone far too long. Okay? Mr. Stoltz?
If I understand the resolution that you put forward correctly, and there's been some debate over the last couple of resolutions, what they were intended to do, all we're recommending is that the administration take a look at this policy and come back with the recommendation. And that recommendation can be that there be no policy, correct? Whoever that question should be directed to, I suppose, and directing it to you to pass on from there.
It could be, though I think the language in motion is slightly more restrictive than that. They have to come back with something. We'll have to interpret that.
We'll, we'll look at that later. If I may quote the musical that almost everybody's forced to watch in history class at least once, "I've never seen or smelled something that was so dangerous it couldn't be talked about." I'm fine talking about this, looking at the policy, and seeing if the administration comes back and, and if the recommendations are not, be a change, well, we'll discuss that when we find out.
Dr. Barker?
I'm all for reviewing policies, but I'm struggling, when I looked at this, I'm struggling for what, what the intent of the policy is. I know Ms. Donches brought up, when we discussed the, the auditor contract, a letter of engagement approving that, she brought up the length of time since we've changed auditors. I looked at that, I looked at several public companies, that's something that gets approved every year in order director meetings for public companies. Walmart's been with Ernst &amp; Young since 2004, far back as I can find. Costco has been with KPMG since 2002. Apple actually did change their auditor, they were with KPMG from 1997 until 2008, and have been with Ernst &amp; Young since then. UPS has been with Deloitte too, since 2004, it's far back as I could find. Other issues that we've looked at, we do regularly review, we get FIBs. And so, I mean, every time this has come up, my take has been, the administration has exercised what I would say, the correct diligence in whether or not to seek requests for proposals or not to seek requests for proposals. It's come up many times in my year and a half on the board, and I can't think of a time where I would have said, "Oh, I would have done something different than what the administration has done regarding a specific thing we were discussing." So I'm, again, struggling for, you know, very restrictive terms in a policy that would add a lot of bureaucracy. So I think, for me personally, I would like to see a policy, a draft policy, that makes sense before I'm willing to instruct the administration to, to come up with a policy on something. I don't see the rationale, I haven't seen a rationale that makes sense for this.
Okay? Dr. Seidberg, do you want to say something?
I think there's been a lot of stuff said tonight. I mean, I can't honestly say that I've ever had a policy regarding this, other than the board has made a decision on, on the search for professional services. They want, the board want to change a particular expert, they've always said that publicly, and now they moved on from there, rather than have a policy with set, and kind of slightly agree with Mr. Earnshaw. In the case of an architect, I don't think I'd ever agree with him. Sometimes we have a building that's not closed for six years, and that's kind of counterproductive. At the same time, there's a lot of legal issues that we have that go on for three or four years, so I'm not so sure of any guideline you can justify. And the last time we looked, we had about eighty-five professional services, this is sort of all, in Stark County. So where, where does it begin, and where does it end? I mean, that's, that's a whole other thing that, when you, when you talked about this a couple of months ago, we went back, you start counting, about eighty-five, right? That was a serious...
A lot of it's settled, and you just...
Yeah, so, I mean, we could get into an argument, what constitutes a professional service, so, I mean, I'm certainly going to work with the board on this, but I'm, I'm a little skeptical about coming up with a company's policy, especially when sixty districts I looked at had, a lot of them had anything remotely like this. But, but I will look, and I will certainly consider, I should have a share of it.
I'll make my comments now. I've checked with PSBA, and they don't have any district under the policy services that has this kind of policy, all right? And quite frankly, some of the arguments being made appear to be attempting around the financial aspects of this review. And quite frankly, I think that the analysis for the need for this policy has been sadly lacking, because there are a number of things that one has to consider, and I'll try to ask you about them in terms of the board. The first is a concept that's very common to business, and we're always asked to act like a business, and that is the total cost of acquisition. Not the individual pieces, but the total cost of acquisition. And if you go to a policy... And if you go to a policy like this, you are conceptually having at some staggered period, if it's three years, it's maybe only thirty a year that you have to have somebody prepare specifications, and then a request for proposal, and then go out for bids, excuse me, advertise, I forgot that part, advertise, then go out for bids, have a pre-bid meeting, have the people respond to the pre-bid with questions or whatever, respond to those questions, which we do now with projects that we do go out for bid, and then somebody's got to analyze the bids when they come back. All of that adds an expense to the basic element that you're purchasing, whatever service it is. And the question is whether the percentage of the additional cost that you're adding to the process in doing that is worth it for the amount that you're talking about. And I note that this attempts to limit it at a micromanagement level of $5,000, which I suppose to some people sounds like a lot of money, but it's not. Not in the context of procurements and RFPs and so forth. You could easily spend the equivalent amount of $5,000 in staff time. And unlike some, I don't believe that we have spare staff time sitting around ready to do this at a moment's notice. So we have to either hire additional staff to do it, or we have to take the staff away from something else, which might be considerably more valuable, to do the analysis required to produce all of these reviews. And like I said, if you're on a three-year review cycle and you have eighty-five or ninety things, that's thirty a year roughly. And remember, all those analyses now, I suppose, have to come to the board and you have to read them over. So there's a great deal of question in my mind about the financial basis for trying to propose any policy like this. And it gets more complicated than even having a single firm doing something like auditing. As has been indicated, there are times when we have more than one project going on, or an architect or an engineer. And you could literally get into situations, especially with legal firms, because we have a number of insurance policies that require us to take their legal firm and use it during any litigation that we're expecting the insurance company to pay for. And we have zero ability to ask them for an RFP or anything else along those lines. And the $5,000 figure, as I indicated, is ridiculous. But let's come to the crux of the matter for me, okay? Who among you would choose your doctor by lowest bidder? Who among you would choose your lawyer to defend you in court? Think O.J. Simpson by lowest bidder. Who would pick the engineer to design your buildings by lowest bidder? I submit that anyone who would do that has serious problems. Because it is not by bid that you select services, but professionals like that. You have to have a trusting relationship when you go into the operating room, that your doctor is good. You have to believe in what that doctor can do for you. You have to have faith that that doctor will do his best for you. You do not get that by trying to choose lowest bidders all the time. And I submit to you that putting this list out of where, who you've got to do this for and think you're going to save any money is short-sighted and flies in the face of real experience. I'm never going to choose my doctor by lowest bidder. I'm never going to choose my attorneys defending me in court by lowest bidder. And I'm not going to, certainly, absolutely not, choose my engineer by lowest bidder. In fact, I've done some research on the ethics of that particular situation with engineers. And it's my considered opinion, which would be interesting to see if it got tested in court, is that any firm claiming to be an engineer in the state of Pennsylvania, which requires that they have a registered professional engineer supervising all work, that attempted to go out and bid on a project by cost, saying that they were the lowest-cost engineer, would be violating engineering ethics and would be subject to legal sanction by the state of Pennsylvania. So it's very likely that you cannot go out or bid on cost for engineering services, and very likely, the same language about following ethical principles is embodied in all of the professional codes in the state of Pennsylvania. So if you think you're going to get lower costs by going out for bid, you've got another thing coming. Because I don't think you legally can ask for the costs. Because the canons of ethics for engineers is listed by the National Society for Professional Engineers explicitly forbid that. You're to select your engineer on the basis of their knowledge, expertise, and quality work, period. So if somebody thinks this is a financial tool, they're sadly stable. And the micromanagement level that's present at $5,000, even the state doesn't make you go out for bid on projects at $5,000. This would be far in excess. I believe the current number is $18,000?
Eighteen thousand five hundred.
Yeah, okay. So this far exceeds any legal basis within the state for requesting how much you're asked for. This is ridiculous. I will not support this, and I can't even see it being the basis of any kind of policy. Okay, round two. Ms. Fuller?
My round, my round, my.
Okay, you're round one.
Now, hourly rate and total cost are two different things. A professional with experience with a higher hourly rate often is more expeditious in completing the project at a lower cost than someone with a lower rate that must invest more time. And in fact, that is indeed the case, I think, with consultants that have served the district for many years. With the institutional memory at their fingertips, there is no need for expensive research, perhaps a quick refresher. But a person entirely new, a company entirely new to the situation, would indeed have to go delving back and bill us for all of that research time. So, working for an engineering firm as I do, I strongly know that lowest hourly cost is not the engineer's rate.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Donches?
Yes, I understand your concerns about the lowest rate, and that's covered in number five, the policy statement, where it said competence, integrity, and cost shall be the major factors in selecting the best qualified service provider, and contract for professional services shall not be based upon competitive bids.
I think you might have been referring to your statement that it's our fiduciary responsibility to the company to work there to afford the payment burden that concerns the running costs on the basis of what you proposed.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what. If somebody wasn't doing any good work for me, I don't care about the three-year period or whatever period it is. It'd be gone the next day. So, I don't see anything there. But go ahead, Ms. Donches.
I'd like to just look through an example, I guess. The letter of engagement. And I'm not saying, you know, we had one from the auditor a week or two ago. So it was a letter of engagement that came from board, and we approved to have the same auditor. But at what point do we find out that there are any other auditors out there that would like to do business for the school district? Or give them the opportunity, should they want to bid, on helping the school district? You know, there is no process.
We should be here.
From what I can see, is just every year, for instance, the auditor is the letter of engagement that comes up every year. So we get on a Thursday night, and on Monday, we're approving and we're not approving. And but what if they wanted, if there were another school auditor out there that wanted to serve the school district? Like, when do they see an advertisement for, "We're going to be renewing," or "The auditor's, the year is up and now the auditor for next year is being solicited"? You know, I understand it would then have to be advertised. But at what point do we even have the opportunity to change? And part of competition is sometimes, and I don't know this for sure, but sometimes you can get a better rate, because competition is still, really, competition.
Trying to make it clear that there's some legal concerns about trying to make a selection on the basis of rate. And that's what I'm trying to get to. At certain professions, that is considered breach of professional ethics to compete with another profession null of that profession on the basis of cost.
But then there would be services or whatever else we put in the RFP, the expectation. So there would be many things to be weighed, not just the cost. There would be the whole package. What is it that we expect this physician to do? And then, there you have it. As far as, you know, if institutional memory or, you know, people get sick, they give up their practice, you know, unfortunately, unexpected deaths and things like that, that's not really a concern about that. I appreciate your consideration. Would this be, would this be one of those times that it might be better to get a few people together on a policy and discuss it and come up with?
That's not the basis of your motion.
That's right.
Mr. Earnshaw? Pardon me. I think, using Ms. Donches's example, every municipal body, every school board, is audited on an annual basis. Every auditor knows that. If there was an auditor that was interested in working with us, there's nothing preventing them from reaching out to our business office or our director of operations to express interest in it. So, to say, "How would they know?" Well, they know, because they do it on the schedule. That's their job. And every school district in the Commonwealth, except maybe one, is on the exact same fiscal year basis of July 1st to June 30th. So there's no mystery there. I think for me, the thing that would prompt me to change a professional is exactly what Mr. Ballard said. If suddenly that professional starts doing substandard work. So if we start having, you know, obviously flawed legal advice, and it becomes obviously flawed when it's overturned in court or where one of us with experience reads it and says, "Hey, hey, hey, come on, you know better than that." Not saying that that would ever happen with Mr. Fisher. But, you know, the things that would, other things that would prompt a change if Mr. Fisher were to decide to retire. So five years from now, he's paid off his kid's college debt. Okay, twelve years from now, twenty-five years. At some point, maybe never. Time to raise your hands. At some point, you know, Mr. Fisher will decide to retire. Now, it would certainly prompt an evaluation. Do we continue with this firm and a different attorney there? Or do we seek another solicitor? We had similar experiences with architects. We had positive experiences with some architects, gave them additional work, and then we had negative experiences with them. So we didn't retain them. We went out, solicited proposals from new architects. We went with a significantly lower-cost architect. And guess what? Our construction costs ended up being significantly higher than expected, because we had a lot of change orders, because the architects didn't do a very good job. We had a problem with the engineering firm that was on that project. They did some very poor engineering. We ended up with more change orders to correct issues. With our most recent project, we told that architect, we used the same architect for the Little Lane Elementary School, but we insisted they use a different engineering firm. We had much better engineering results, but not perfect. They missed one measurement by, what, 200 feet or something? But they didn't realize we needed, what, a conduit for electricity or something? Or was it sewage water, whatever it was? You know, something that was 200 feet shorter. And well, guess what? We ended up with a change order. So, you know, all of these things that we run into can cause us to spend significant additional dollars from having bad professional services. And that usually, unfortunately, when you have a bad experience, is what prompts you to change them. Otherwise, eighty-five, I had no idea it was that many. But I can't imagine if we went out, there are speech therapists, occupational therapists, language translators who are working with the families at home. Every month, we'd be reviewing two or three of these things. That would be insane. Absolutely, too. We'd probably have to hire at least one more person in the business office just to do RFPs in the hopes of shaving a few dollars here and there. I don't think we need a policy for this. Anybody else? None appearing? Ms. Burtzle, you called roll on the issue of creating a policy for engagement of professional services.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
No.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
No.
Mr. Polacano?
I'm still on a pencil on this, I'm staying.
Dr. Bogner?
No.
Mr. Stolz?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
No.
Mr. Brower?
No.
Six eyes?
Seven a's.
Seven a's.
Six nags.
Wait a minute. It's late. Two eyes, six nags, and one extension.
Okay. Now, is there any new business to come before the assembly this evening? Ms. Donches?
I just had a handout. I have a, you know, Mr. Ballard, you had asked for budget information to be given in a good amount of time. So I just had a handout, all opinions, emotions, or anything. This is the most suggested budget reduction that a company like the administration could come to me and come to that out.
I see.
I would like to make a presentation. Audience, have the next meeting.
We'll be discussing the budget, so you can bring it up then. Because we will have to approve the budget for next meeting. Anything else? We had a clear session prior to this to discuss personnel, confidential matters, and negotiations. And our next meeting, when we will approve the final budget for 2013, will be Monday, June 24th. And June 11th, as Dr. Cypher indicated, is the last day of school. I'll now undertake motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.